What we should do, if that's how it's supposed to work, I believe.
Okay.
See, I think, see, I think just the opposite in the first place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably.
Call me in an order, please, guys. You have a location, I want to recognize corrections officers week which was May 4th to the 10th, police officers week which was May 11th through 17th. And at this time, I'd like to observe a moment of silence in honor of all corrections and police officers who have given their lives in protecting the citizens of this country.
Mr. Berstow? Mr. Hilliard?
Here.
Mr. Koltchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Here.
We're going to meet on agenda. Any comments, questions? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Most curious. Consent agenda.
Make a motion, consent agenda will be approved, please.
In a second.
I have motion in a second. This includes the minutes of April 2nd, 2014 board meeting, the minutes of April 29th, 2014 board study session in strategic planning, the minutes of May 12th, 2014 board study session strategic planning, and May 24th, budget operations and fund transfers which are attached under.
Is that correct?
Correct. Comments? Marshall Law. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Koltchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Next is public comment. Whoever would like to speak, raise your hand, be recognized, give their name, come up to the podium, give their name, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. And go from there.
Yes, sir. My name is Jack Soffin, and I'm from Bear Lake. I've been working with the Bear Lake, or Bear, Greater Bear watershed. And I'm here just to thank you all. You might say, that's our job, we should be involved in watersheds, we should be doing all of this. But in fact, you do it in a cooperative and a really helpful sphere, and I truly appreciate that. And just thought that you don't get the recognition, and the county doesn't get the recognition that it deserves. I'll give you some examples. We started the lake improvement board. Ross Palmero, Tom Kaminsky were right there to help us get started so we could do quick treatment of the lake, treat the lake, the 330 acres that had the mill foil. And we've been controlling that every year, ever since, practically down to zero. You're extremely helpful. Drain commissioner sits on that board, and Hilliard sits on that board, Alan O'Shea sat on it before. And it's a great group of people that make sure that that lake is going to remain healthy and useful, and tax dollars coming to the county. The Greater Bear watershed was established, and we've gotten some wonderful help with that, especially with Kirsten Sheffield, who's here today, and she's going to talk a little bit about the program she does. Rob Carson has been terrific. We've got a storm drain issue in the village of Bear Lake. It's old, it's clogged, we don't know what it really does, we can't, we don't really know where all of the drain lines go, and where all the drain sites were. We had to spend a lot of time trying to capture all of that. We think we're close to having that captured, now we know we need to do something with it. Rock has been really, really helpful in that. Kirsten's involved in that project, along with invasive species, trying to make sure that we can keep them out of our lakes and streams, which is extremely helpful. So I could go on and on with examples, I'm not going to do that, I think you get the idea. And I'm just pleased to see that you have a strategic planning effort underway. And water is really important to us here on the west shore of Michigan, especially in the Manistee area. And so the time you devote to planning how to help keep our waters good, pure, protect and preserve them, is really well spent, and will help other people like me in the future. So for me and my family and grandchildren, and all of the grandchildren in the area who know you're working for future generations to keep our waters preserved and healthy, we all thank you. Thanks, all of you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Suzanne Schwinn. I'm from the village of Oneakama, and the chairman of the Langland Park Restoration Committee. Langland Park, better known as the turnaround, is the major access to Lake Michigan for the Oneakama community. To give you just a quick history, in 1989, the state passed the Critical Doom Act. For some unbeknownst reason, which we cannot determine at this point, the state identified this area as a critical doom, which in reality is wind-blown sand which has been allowed to accumulate. We asked the DEQ to please give us a definition of what determines a critical doom. They have none. I've talked to three different areas of DEQ, Grand Rapids, Lansing, Cadillac. There is absolutely no definition for a critical doom. What constitutes a critical doom? They went up and down the lake shore on Lake Michigan on the west side, and with their atlas determined what areas are critical doom areas. They identify dooms, they identify vegetation, but they have no definition of what constitutes a critical doom. This can be a critical doom, this place is not, this doom is not critical. We feel that is a major flaw with the DEQ. In 2005, the township tried to get a permit to renew the accumulated sand. Starting in the late 80s, the sand is starting to accumulate there, it's continued to accumulate, it has destroyed the view for the people in the area, and it has destroyed easy access for the people in the area. Our Langland Park Restoration Committee has decided that we are going to pursue this on behalf of the township, with the assistance of the township, to get a permit. We feel we're going to be very successful this time around, we have really good arguments for the DEQ. We're meeting on June 2nd, 10 o'clock in the morning. We'd like to invite all of you to come, and Senator Boer will be there, Representative Franz will be there, local government officials will be there, members of the public. Members of the public will tell how for decades, the beach was level with the parking lot. But because of this designation, we've not been able to keep a view, keep easy access. We have the National Association of the Physically Handicapped supporting us, who will be in attendance, which is a major issue for restoring that area. So I'm here to invite you to please come. Not asking for any money, just asking you to come and be present to hear what's going on. It's an opportunity for you to maybe visit with your fellow politicians, and as I said before, I think we'll be very successful this time around. It's important, not only for the people in the community, but for the tourists who come and use the area, and certainly for the economic health of our area. Any questions, comments?
The second is on Monday.
The second is on Monday, two weeks from yesterday.
And the time is what?
10 o'clock in the morning at Portage Point Inn. We would ask that if you can come a few minutes early, it'll give you an opportunity to go out and look at the turnaround, and see what we're dealing with out there. I will say, Mother Nature's been rather kind to us this year, and has blown down some of the dand, sand, do it anyway, so, but we really need to redistribute the sand. Army Corps of Engineers has no problem with it, as long as we don't go above the high-water mark. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, moving on, corrections and officers, first line, it's time?
I'd like to have, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Ken Madison. And I'm from General Island, a different county than yours. What I want to talk to you about is our drug problem. 115 and counting, that number is the number of deaths since 2009 in Grand Rapids, Leland Park, Benzy, and Manistee Counties. I don't know what Mason County has in deaths, the drug-related. Ray Franz, when I talked to him, actually, I wrote him a letter, and he called me, he would like to have Mason County included also. And what I am proposing is that I'm going to give you the addresses of all the politicians we have in our area, and I'd like to have you either write a letter, or take the list and give it to some influential people in this area, and beg for some money. There was a DARE program, that's D-A-R-E, Drug Abuse Resistance Education. They used to be in every school on this side of the state. Not there anymore, for lack of funding. We should try and get that funding back. If we don't try, and if we don't come up with money some other way, future deaths are on our hands. We have a job to do. If we can't get funding, I think our next choice is going to be a small village. It won't take much. I'm thinking of doing a five-county alliance. And I think that two, what they call them as resource officers, could be used for the, for the five counties. One for the Grand Rapids and Leland Park, and then the second one would be for the rest of the counties. If it takes a village, it's a small village. Point O two. And a $200,000 home assessed at $100,000? Think about it. Two dollars. It's only two dollars. So if we can't, you people try and get the funding from the state, my next move is I'll be coming back, and I'm going to be asking for you to put a village on that. Are there any questions? I will comment that Manistee has had the most improvement in the last two years. So somebody is doing something right, but I think we have to go further. You're still getting drug-related deaths. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Corrections officers, first line.
The only item that would fall into this is there's a letter that was prepared that I'm asking the board to send from the chairman to Sheriff Kalatowski and Captain Hank, as to the jail administrator, in recognition of Police Officers Week and Corrections Officers Week. I don't know if you want me to read it?
No, I was going to read it, I'm going to comment.
Okay. Or, yeah, full of cheeky. Oh, well, you wanted to, okay. That's the only thing I have.
Okay. Pretty good. Okay, at 9:15, it's in the library.
Sir. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I was not violating any of the speed laws, but I did leave my house this morning and forgot my phone, so God forbid, I had to turn around and get that, but anyways, made that, made that transition okay. I'd like to just, once again, say thank you for allowing me to be here, just give you an update from MAC. I have a couple of meetings today, one in Kent County, and also in Benzy County, so with the price of gas, at least we're trying to make the rounds and make it as economical as possible. I bring you very good news, and that is for 2015, the first time since 2004, the counties in the state of Michigan will be fully funded for revenue sharing. We worked very hard with the board of directors, and also with our legislators, and the governor's office, and we're just pleased that revenue sharing is going to be fully funded. Also, last year, we were able to work with Senator Casperson and Senator Boer on the PILP payments for counties. That legislation was passed, and now the PILP payments for counties will be on time and the proper amount. So those are two very good, some good news, once in a while, to bring to the, to the Manistee County. We're working on at MAC, on legislation that would prevent the unfunded mandates. And that's the mandates that come down from the state of Michigan that are imposed upon the counties, and if a law is passed, the funding would have to be, go along with that. So we're working on that as well. We're also looking at personal property tax, and the ability to get the personal property tax reimbursed at 100% back to, back to the counties. So we're working on those issues right now, and just wanted to give you an update, and appreciate Manistee County, appreciate the commissioners that participate, also very appreciative to Tom. Anytime we call, he's very, very responsive in getting us our information at MAC, and we can't do our job unless we get the information from you folks. And Tom's been very, very good as far as getting back with us and providing us some information, and we're very appreciative of that. So just wanted to have an opportunity to come and talk to you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. And if I don't have the answer, I'll call the people in our office that do have the answers.
I got a question on the personal property tax that's going to be on the August ballot.
That's correct.
You're advocating vote yes on it, you're supporting it.
Yes.
And at face value, let's say I do also. But I read through a lot of stuff, and then there's one, actually, one sentence here that talks about, this is in a paper from Deena from MAC.
Okay.
And it says, "These credits, along with the enactment of the state essential service assessments, will cover most of the cost of reimbursements to locals. But even with utilizing all of these funds, the state will face a shortfall in the general fund of approximately $126 million in 2022." And really, what I'm getting at is, as county commissioners, if this is, if this is in the best interest of the counties, how do we advocate the people to vote yes at the, at the August primary? In other words, I can't tell someone, you know, I encourage you to vote yes, without giving them an explanation. What I'm curious about is, you say that there won't be no dollars taken from the general fund, but I don't, I don't understand it, I guess. So how can I advocate people to vote yes on it?
Well, I think the key focus in on that would be that if, if you don't vote yes, then the personal property tax that's presently imposed will remain in place, so the businesses will be, will not get that tax credit. So that's how they're going to work that out, as far as I know. For the real technical questions on this, you, we really need to get ahold of Deena, and I can get back with you on that, because she, she knows the technical aspects of it.
Yeah, and, and I understand if it's voted down, that it could go through a lame duck session this year yet, and we could end up with something that we don't want.
Right.
In other words, at face value, I support this, but it's just hard for me to tell, for just some reasons alone, that's why you should vote this in.
Well, we're going to, we're going to continue to keep you updated as everything gets closer to the, to the ballot issue, and if you don't have the information that you want and be able to answer the questions, you can certainly get ahold of me, and we'll get Deena on the line, and she can explain those technical parts of the, of the proposal.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Last week, I posed this question to Deena. But anyways, are they going to restore any of the general funding to the mental health services?
You know, I can't answer that question right now. I know there was talk about that last week. I know there's been some talk about that, and I can't answer, I don't know exactly where, what the status is right now on that.
Because I was, well, I was on vacation.
Right.
So I wasn't at health services. But if central wellness takes on a paying customer, they have to deduct that off their general funding, which is just being cut. So it's gotten to the point where they can't take on people they can pay.
Right.
And that's why the general fund has to be brought back, at least most of it, to where it was, so we can keep our services.
I, I don't have the answer to that question, but I know that we discussed it a little bit at our staff meeting a week before. Let me get an updated status on that. But I know there has been some talk about that, what, where it is right now, I can't answer, I don't know. But I can get back to you.
Because some of the organizations, they restored some of it.
Right.
And central wellness did get some, but some of the CMHs that are over there, they didn't get any money. So they're really hurting right now, they're out of money.
Right.
And that's why I'm asking this, because in the next budget, will we put any back in?
I will, I'll find out. I know we talked about it, but I can't just, I can't put my hands around it right now.
Okay.
I got one more question. At the MAC conference in Lansing there, one of the London, I can't pronounce that word at all, Tom, one of the work sessions was on agriculture. They talked about Michigan being the second largest producer of quantities of fruits and vegetables in the country, second only to California. And they talked about a variety of issues of fruits and vegetables. And then they also spoke, spoke about, like, asparagus and everything, the problems with the immigration reform laws, with the WV visa, getting people there to actually harvest the produce. And it really dominated quite a bit of that conversation. Was there anything at the staff level talked about immigration reform, and the ability to capture the crops that we can grow instead of the?
I'm not familiar with that, particularly, I'm not familiar with that discussion on the immigration reform. I know there's been talk about that in the past, and what it means for the workers that come in to harvest the crops. And we did have a meeting about six months ago with the Department of Ag on some of those issues, and I think Dana from our staff is handling that, so I can get back with you on that as well.
Thank you.
Be glad to.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We, our five minutes to the next scheduled report, our current finances, and I think we'll get off when it's not too late. We do submit our claims from August 16th through May 7, 2014, in our finances. I'm not going to read all the numbers unless you'd like me to. Do you want me to read all the numbers?
Sorry.
Okay. Total's claimed and allowed, May 20th, 2014, were $536,094.59. The total payroll for the period of August, or April 16th through May 7th, 2014, were I submit these claims, and would like approval from financial statement. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any other questions, Simmons, or others?
Mr. Koltchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Do you want to go to the next? Yeah, we got a couple minutes here. Go ahead.
Okay, this is the Ways and Means Report of, let me get back, I'm seeing what it was. May 7th, 2014, Ways and Means Report, first item, as I get to it here. Mr. Palmer explained a request for proposals for RFP for the county's audit is ready to be sent out. However, after the presentation by Cambridge and Company at the last board meeting, he wasn't sure if the board would rather exercise the option to extend their contract for up to two years. Mr. Kaminsky stated that Mesaki County recently settled an RFP for audit, and Cambridge Company came in thousands of dollars lower than the other bits. After our discussion, Mr. Schmidt recommended that the county exercise the option in the current contract with Cambridge and Company to perform the county's audit, annual audit for the fiscal year 2013-14 at the price of $21,980, and fiscal year 2014-15 at the price of $22,640. No alternative recommendation was made, and I'll make that motion.
Motion without a second? That's a question. Motion with a second, and more discussion?
Maybe we should explain what happened. Do you want, go ahead, Alan.
No, I was going to ask a question, actually. We talked about the contract with David Wilson, and then the firm was sold to Cambridge. Did the contract go with it, or did I just forget that we passed that through when that settlement was made, or?
They honored the contracts that were already in place, right, Tom?
Just a question again.
With David Wilson, who's, who the contract originally was with, sold to Cambridge, did that contract just go with it? Because you say that we're still under contract.
Yeah, well, okay, here's, here's, here's what we have right now. We had a, several years, three years ago, you passed a three-year agreement with Cambridge, with the David Wilson Associates, CPA, for a three-year period, and they offered two years, a two-year option to renew for two additional years, which would be the years Mr. Schmidt just mentioned. When that came up several months ago, there was a lot of talk by the board that we'd use David Wilson for many, many years, and it might be time for us to put it out for bid, and actually choose a different company, not so much for price, but because a different set of eyes looking at, at the books, and it might be a better, a better set. In the meantime, over the last year or two, David Wilson, who's still somewhat involved, sold out to Cambridge and Company, and then we have had a whole new set of auditors, actually out of Grand Rapids.
That's correct.
Looking at the financials. So Russ and I discussed that, and said, we're ready to put this out for bid. Should we go to the Ways and Means Committee one more time and just say, we're ready to put out for bid? Do you want us to do that, or do you, are you satisfied now that we will have a different set of eyes? And the reason we did that, only is because, if you remember, Mr. Ber, Mr. Berlin, last month, mentioned to you during his audit report, that there's an option for an additional two years. And we brought that to the Ways and Means Committee, they said, well, you know, we do have a different set of eyes looking at it now, it's a different company, it's a larger company. company, um, so why don't we just, why don't we just, um, uh, accept those two option years? And one of the reasons for that is because, well, I can tell you that we've had David Wilson and Associates for a long time, mainly because they're always the lowest price by law. And Mesaki County actually sent me an email, uh, a couple of months ago, saying, we just put out bids, and, uh, Cambridge and Company was thousands of dollars lower than everyone else, do they do a good job? And so I responded to them, and that's how I know that, that, that they were actually lowest. So I can almost guarantee you that, you know, no one's gonna do it much cheaper than them, or cheaper at all, um, and so rather than go through all the process of an RFP, are you satisfied, the action you're taking right now, are you satisfied with going with Cambridge for an extra two years, have them do our audit, or do you want us to go through the process of putting it out for an RFP? And the Ways and Means Committee's recommendation is renew for two more years. I know it, I, that was a long explanation.
Is that basically what we, we talked about? Because RFP was gonna cost, we're gonna send out, and all the people are gonna have to put the bids, and it's gonna cost them money, we're gonna do it again in two years anyways, so, and they keep, they're, I can guarantee they're gonna be the lowest next time, too, because they already know what they're looking at. A new company has to start from scratch, so, but with just the idea that we don't, we didn't want to send it to everyone else, and in two years come back and do it anyway, so.
I understand everything everyone said, so let, let me ask you this, because my question is, we, we don't even really have a contract with Cambridge, we have a contract with Wilson that we have extended.
That's correct, but Wilson, is that?
Yes, that's all I wanted.
Okay.
Any other questions? One call, please.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Duns?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Krulczak?
Yes.
We're gonna put you on hold, uh, 9:30 here, Mr. Palmer, you're up. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, last month, you heard from the auditors, and you heard, uh, all of the good news and all of the big numbers, and, um, with our fund balance, and this morning, I'm just here to kind of break that down and explain to you where that money is and what it's, um, being used for, if some of it is restricted or assigned, um, and I'll just go through the report and give it to you all. Some of his numbers were very large, but you have to remember that when he gives you the audit report, the total fund balance that he's talking about isn't only for just the county, it also includes the medical care facility and the road commission and some of the other, um, component units of the county. What I'm gonna talk about today, and he touched on it a little bit, is just Manistee County, the county proper, um, not including those component units. And one thing that you have to remember is that these fund balances that I'm gonna give you were as of October 1st, 2013. Some things have changed since then, I mean, in, in our current budget year, we have $100,000 budgeted to be coming out of fund balance. Whether we have to transfer that money or not will be seen at the end of the year, but that, that is already budgeted for this current fiscal year. And, um, some of the other, um, fund balances have already started to be spent down as well, and I'll touch on those as we go through this. So we'll start with the general fund. Um, the, the total general fund fund balance is $1,419,382.74. Of that, $1,071,193.96 is unrestricted, and then we have assigned fund balances of $133,092.29 for legal fees, um, $84,001,0288 for technology, and $130,993.61 for elections. Um, we, we used to have separate funds for legal fees, for technology, for elections, and because of GASB rules, we had to combine all of those into the general fund. When we did that, we assigned the fund balances that we transferred from those funds into the general fund for those purposes specifically. For legal fees, we would pay, you know, our, our labor attorney and any other legal fees that we have to pay out of there. Technology, we all know, we need lots of new technology here at the courthouse, and the elections is dollars that the clerk will use, um, we, we don't budget any money for election expenses, the money that she will spend for the elections this year and in, in the next, in two years from now, will come out of this assigned fund balance.
But we actually do budget some, but...
It's minimal.
Is there also a, one question? This technology money you have sitting in here, that's not the money that we collect from the Register of Deeds card?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll, we'll see that later.
Okay.
Friend of the Court Fund, um, we have $54,733.15. These are dollars that are collected, um, and put into the Friend of the Court Fund, and this, these dollars are restricted, and they're under the control of the Circuit Court Judge, and he determines how and when that money will be spent. We, uh, you as county commissioners really have no control over that money. The Department Contingency Fund, um, there's $349,876.79, and I'm sure you're all familiar with the Department Contingency Fund. At the end of the year, if anyone has anything left over in their, um, department that they didn't spend, a portion of that goes into their Department Contingency Fund that they can use for unexpected expenses on down the road. And if you look at the last page of the report, that Department Contingency Fund is broken down, um, by each department, which, which each department has, and I'm not gonna go through all that, but you can look at that, but, um, some departments have a lot of money, some departments have very little, but that's money that they've accumulated over the years, and, uh, already this year, we didn't budget anything for equipment and those kind of things in this year's budget, so, and we've requested that departments come and request to use their Department Contingency money, um, if they have equipment needs, and there have been several departments that have done that already. Um, the jail, you'll see in your, um, Ways and Means, they had made a request, uh, the courts had made a request for some, uh, audio equipment up in the court rooms, so some of that money is already being spent. Recycling Fund, $5,043.62. The recycling fund is a restricted fund, there's, um, an assessment that goes out in certain townships, and that money comes in, goes into that fund, and is used to pay the recycling costs. Uh, Brownfield Redevelopment Fund, $9,243.99. That's money that, uh, the Brownfield Redevelopment, uh, Board gets from, uh, different projects that they do, uh, they, they get an, uh, administration fee, when and if the people ever pay their taxes, MAC, um, but, uh, so that money is used, um, for, to, you know, for Brownfield, uh, plans and, and different things in the future. Public Improvement Fund, $34,327.54. These monies are restricted for, um, public improvements, uh, these monies are, they're not really restricted, they're, they're set aside for that, but again, the county commissioners have control over that, and so if they wanted to move that money, if they needed that money for anything, that money is available. Capital Improvement Fund, $581,106.44. Again, these monies are set aside for capital improvements, um, but again, the county commissioners have, uh, the ability to move that money and use that for anything that they want. Just at this point, you earmarked that for capital improvements.
Just, one more time, I just want to remind you of something Russ said a little while ago, that's not how much money's necessarily in there today, um, or what's budgeted. Of that $581,000, you may already have, but you've committed in the Capital Improvement Fund, uh, probably 200 or 300 of that $581 already, you're gonna do a jail project for boilers, you put, uh, stuff on the windows, uh, that kind of stuff, so I just want you to know, this, remind you that all these fund balances are as of October 1st, 2013, doesn't have anything to do with what, some of this money's budgeted for this year, so just keep that in mind. Doesn't mean that you have that much money today.
The, um, Remonumentation Fund, $5,500 in there, that is a, a grant fund that's used for the remonumentation of the county, those dollars are absolutely restricted to be used only for that, uh, purpose. Uh, the Brownfield Site Assessment Fund, $20,531.80. Again, this is a grant fund, the only reason that there's money in there is a timing issue at the end of the year, those dollars, um, were probably already committed for, uh, other things, um, and again, that's a grant fund, and, and those dollars are absolutely restricted only to use for that. Register of Deeds Automation Fund, this is what Mr. Schmidt had asked about earlier, um, $62,970.24. A portion of every deed that's recorded goes into this, uh, Register of Deeds Automation Fund, and is restricted only for use by the Register of Deeds for technology-related things in her office. By the Stabilization Fund, $1,448,561.55. This is our rainy day fund. We, I'm showing a restricted fund balance of $804,394, and that probably could be moved out of the restricted line, because we had set that aside for, um, state revenue sharing. When we were, when we went, had the revenue sharing reserve fund, and we were transferring dollars every year from that into the general fund, we were slowly weaning ourselves off, we were transferring less money into the general fund, and a portion of that money was going into the Budget Stabilization Fund, so in case when we came out of that formula and the state decided not to fund revenue sharing, it wouldn't be a half a million dollar hit to our budget. It was a plan that we had worked out over the course of the years, and it worked very well. Now that revenue sharing is fully funded, at least for this year, um, you know, we, we basically have an $800,000 windfall. Now, um, I'm not really eager to go out and spend that money, because if next year they decide to cut revenue sharing, this year we're gonna put $500,000 in our budget for revenue sharing, if they cut that next year to zero, we're gonna have to come up with a half a million dollars to, you know, balance our budget, because when we go through our budget this year, we will budget that money, and it will be, you know, all accounted for, and, and, uh, so when, when we lose it, if we lose it, it will be a big hit, so, um, that's, that's our rainy day fund, and hopefully...
That looks like a lot, that looks like a lot of money, but it's really only a year and a half of revenue sharing.
Right.
If the states were to cut us off, we have a year and a half to somehow cut our budget by $500,000.
The Mounted Search and Rescue Fund, $288, or $2,088.18. These are dollars that come in from donations, um, and for the, the Mounted Search and Rescue Program that's run through the Sheriff's Department. These funds are controlled by the sheriff, and they're to be used only for, um, Mounted Search and Rescue. Health Insurance Fund, $129,680.81. We transfer money every year from our general fund and from any other fund where we have employees into the health insurance fund to cover the health insurance costs. Um, we have a fund balance of $129,000, and these will be used to cover, um, health insurance costs in the future, um, as we go. Manistee Dive Equipment Fund, $118.28. Again, these are dollars that come in that are, um, donations, they're controlled by the sheriff, and they're to be used only for the dive team. Sheriff Department Forfeited Assets Fund, $2,861.22. Again, these are funds that are controlled by the sheriff, um, when, uh, they have drug arrests and different things, and people forfeit their assets, they go into this fund, and then when that fund gets a significant amount of money in it, it's generally transferred to the scent drug team, um, for use, uh, in that respect, so. Uh, it's, uh, only a small amount in there, if we, um, if that fund builds up, then the, the scent team usually requests those dollars, so. Fancy Family Counseling Services Fund, $26,706.46. These funds are controlled by the Circuit Court Judge, they come, a portion of every marriage license, um, the fees go into this fund, and it's used for family counseling through the Friend of the Court. Law Enforcement Training Fund, $9,625.62. Law enforcement training has, they have their own fund, the dollars go in there, they get it from a couple of different sources, um, the, law enforcement has, um, training needs different than most other departments that are mandated by the state, and so rather than, uh, the sheriff budgeting every year in his general fund budget for those training costs, we've set up this fund, and it's worked very well. Um, the revenue from the airport, uh, security goes in there, and then you get some grants from the state, uh, as well, to cover those costs. Air Photo Fund, $29,901.41. These dollars, um, when, when we sell aerials, those aerial, the dollars go into this fund, and we let that fund build up, and then when it comes time every five years or seven years to fly new aerials, um, we have enough money and we don't have to take a big hit out of our general fund. We did get a grant of $40,000 from the Revenue Sharing Board to cover a lot of those costs, that's why we still have, um, $29,000 available just after we flew, um, the, uh, the aerials.
We flew aerials last year. Is that, is that paid for now? Yes.
The LAPC Grant Fund, $982.56. This is a restricted fund, and these, um, dollars are controlled by our, your Emergency Management Coordinator. Mr. Hilliard ensures is familiar with these funds, so. Community Corrections Fund, um, $19,510. You all have seen Neil Asante in here talking about his community corrections program, um, the county, uh, Manistee County and Benzie County both contribute to that fund, uh, his revenue was a little bit higher, um, last year than, uh, he had anticipated from the state of Michigan, and resulted in a $19,000 fund balance. That will most likely reduce the amount of money that Manistee County has to transfer into that fund in the future, so. But again, those dollars are controlled by your Circuit Court Judge and are to be used only for, um, uh, community corrections. Drunk Driving Case Flow Fund, $58,302.92. These are dollars that come in from the state of Michigan, um, for drunk driving cases that go through the court system, and they go into this fund, they are used for, um, different things by the, the District Court. We have an agreement with the, well, we don't have a District Court Judge anymore, but with the prior District Court Judge, um, we always transfer the amount of money out of this fund into the general fund to cover their, um, cost of the maintenance agreement or their judicial software up there, so. Childcare Fund, $358,785.86. Again, these funds are controlled by the Circuit Court Judge, and they're to be used for childcare fund-related expenses only. This, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, over $500,000 in this fund, we have not transferred any general fund dollars into that fund in a long time, although I think we have something budgeted for this year.
He's on 25,000?
25,000, yeah. So, you know, we heard from our auditors a couple of years ago that that fund balance was too high, and we needed to spend that down, so we have been spending that down, so now it's down to $358,000. Again, uh, if that, if that money wasn't there, we would be transferring probably $100,000 a year out of the general fund into the Friend of the Court Fund, uh, childcare fund to cover those expenses. Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund, $53,000, or $5,398.83. These are funds that are used by the Veterans Counselor to, for veteran-related expenses. Airport Authority Fund, $73,120.67. These are, um, dollars that are used for airport-related expenses and are controlled by the Airport Authority. Compensated Services Fund, that's our retirement fund, um... Compensated Services Fund, that's our retirement fund and not our retirement fund.
We'd be in big trouble if that was our retirement fund.
$1,312.40. No, that, that again is similar to the Health Insurance Fund where we transfer money out of each department into this fund and then pay our commitment to MERS out of this. And at the end of the year, we have a small balance in there.
And I want to remind you because, you know, retirement in government is a big deal right now and a lot of people are watching that. We do pay, a lot of people think, you know, we do have an unfunded liability with MERS and it's significant, several million dollars. But MERS, just so you know, we don't only pay our current costs to the MERS retirement system. We pay our current costs plus an unfunded liability that's determined by MERS and MERS spreads that over a 15- to 20-year period. And, you know, a lot of things have to go, go right based on their assumptions, you know, they're assuming certain payroll increases, they're assuming certain returns on money. But we are paying our normal cost plus an unfunded liability. So there is a plan. I mean, you can always choose to send more, but there is a plan to, to eliminate that unfunded liability. Plus, all new employees are only partially on a defined benefit plan. The rest of, the all-new employees, there's about 20 of them now, are on a defined benefit and a defined contribution plan, which is split. So we're, so our costs there are, are less also.
The County Employee Separation Fund, $61,581.51. The County Separation Fund is another fund where we transfer dollars every year from each department into the County Separation Fund. And then when we have an employee that leaves, and I don't know if you'll see any of that today, but, you know, they get paid for their accumulated sick vacation and personal days. Those dollars don't have to then come out of our general fund, they come out of this County Separation Fund. And this year, we've already probably spent a lot of money on that. We've had a lot of people that have left already this year. But we still have plenty of money in there to cover those costs and we will be transferring more money in there at the end of this year to cover those costs. Unemployment Fund is exactly the same thing. There's $42,198.28 in there. We transfer money every year into the Unemployment Fund and we don't pay a quarterly or monthly or by payroll amount for our unemployment. We get billed at the end of the year for anyone, if, if we have no one that goes on unemployment, our unemployment costs are zero. Like unlike other businesses that play, pay a percentage of their payroll, ours is zero. We reimburse the unemployment agency for any costs that they incur for employees that have been laid off or are collecting unemployment. The Revenue Sharing Reserve Fund, this was the fund that was set up when we went on the Revenue Sharing Reserve Program. There's $10,510 left in there. That money will be transferred into the general fund sometime during this year because that program has come to an end. Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, $2,106,987.9. Again, these are dollars that are used to pay the local units their delinquent taxes. That was as of October 1st. That fund, I'm sure, is significantly higher now. Hopefully it is because we're going to be paying out in excess of $3 million here within probably by the end of this month. So, and then our OPEB Trust Fund, $1,169,967.69. I'm sure you've all heard about our OPEB unfunded liability and this, and paying our OPEB costs, that's what these dollars are for. We are required to have this fund set up. We did not open a trust account and put it into a trust account. We are not required to do that because when you open that trust account, it is an irrevocable trust. And if we somehow, over the course of time, reduced our OPEB liability, if we didn't offer any other post-employment benefits to our employees, there was dollars in this, we would have no way of recouping it at that time. So we've decided not to open the trust account. We just put it into a separate fund and then we will pay our retiree healthcare costs out of this fund. We transfer money into it every year. We put a large amount in there that we had set aside by board action, just under a million dollars. And now we're putting, putting our current contributions in there as well. And then we will, we will be paying our retiree healthcare costs out of this fund. Our total OPEB unfunded liability is $3,041,084. So, you know, although we have a lot of money in there, we're still a long way from having that unfunded liability set aside. And the last fund is the Drain Fund. And as of October 1st, that had a fund balance of $40,206.17. And those funds are restricted for the Kettle Hole Drain District. And again, some of that money has been spent since that time. So our total fund balance, including the tax revolving fund, is $8,141,119.20. Not including the tax revolving fund, $6,34,132.11. And not including the tax revolving fund and the OPEB Trust Fund is $4,864,164.42. So we do have a very healthy fund balance. We are in very good shape in Manistee County. And I just wanted to give you this report. I give it to you every year and you've heard all the good numbers. Last, so this just kind of gives you an idea of where that money is and what you've kind of earmarked it for. Again, a lot of it, although it's in different funds, you have control over that money and you need that money for other things that's available to you. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Let me ask you this, the first one on the general fund. The $1,419,000 change in the federal fund, that's assigned fund balance. So let's say that's what, 12% of our operating budget for the year, or whatever it is, 13% or whatever. Is that something you, at your position, look at to where, why I'd really wish that was up about 18% or 19%? Or it's 5% or 6% okay? Or is this amount okay? Where do you feel comfortable at?
We would, we would like to have about 18% of our annual budget. But if you look at what we have here in the, in the general fund and if you combine that with our rainy day fund, we're a little bit over that 18%. I think we're around 22%, which is very, very healthy. It would be good and they recommend that we have at least 18%. I know that there are a lot of counties that don't have that kind of money. There are some of them that have way, way more than that.
One, one thing that's never happened here and maybe as part of your strategic planning process, you should, this board should probably take a position on where you want to be with fund balance, where you would like to maintain a fund balance. Then it's almost like, we have a tax revolving fund policy that, that basically says we will transfer 100% of the earnings in there as long as, every year, we transfer about $400,000 from the tax revolving fund balance on our general fund budget. That's because of a policy this board, this board created several years ago that says once we get to fully funded or we get close to fully funded, we will take up to 100% of our funds and use them in the general fund. And we do that every single year, just automatically as part of our, our budget. You can do the same thing with your fund balance. Once you get to 18%, 19%, or 15% or whatever this board feels comfortable with, then you, then you could take that money and transfer to the general fund or to some of these other funds as time goes on. So it's kind of a policy thing that we probably should, this board should think about as time goes on.
Any other questions for Russ? Thank you. Right on time, too. I like that. Okay. Act Block 3 is time set for the public hearing on the Brownfield, the former Kennedy School redevelopment location at 610 Parkdale Avenue in Manistee Township. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the above referred Brownfield plan. All citizens, taxpayers and representatives or officials have, from any taxing jurisdiction shall be afforded the opportunity to hear regarding the Brownfield plan. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into public hearing. I'm making motion to go into public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Room call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Danz?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Proctor?
Yes.
What we're going to do first is we're going to have a presentation on the Brownfield plan and then if there's any questions, you may speak after that.
Thank you very much. My name is Mike McClelland and I guess I'm responsible for collecting taxes in the county, right? My name is Mike McClelland. I'm with Adwo Mavi. We're a consulting engineering firm on a suburb city. We're hired by the Manistee County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to implement the EPA grant that Russ spoke of earlier. And as part of that grant, we're able to identify, assess and position projects for redevelopment in the project we have this morning today is the Kennedy School, former Kennedy School redevelopment as well. I'm just going to kind of run through the purpose and approval process for the Brownfield, what the project is, the public purpose, which is a requirement for the finding of this board, what Brownfield eligible property is, what Brownfield tax increment financing is, and the proposed Brownfield schedule as well. So just a little bit of background for the purpose, and I know you have gone through this as well with the Oak Grove facility. But Act 3D1 provides for the reimbursement of certain eligible activities on Brownfield eligible property through the capture of future taxes, future increased taxes due to additional investments. So what happens is there's an opportunity, there are certain eligible activities that I'll explain a little bit later that can occur, and those are repaid through the capture of future taxes that wouldn't otherwise be available. So the idea here is an investment of those future tax dollars that you wouldn't have otherwise gotten without this redevelopment can also, you can receive, yield significant returns over time for those taxes. So the Brownfield Plan approval process, of course, with any project like this, there's approval processes that have to happen. It requires the Brownfield Plan is approved by the Manistee County Brownfield Authority and the County Board with the concurrence of the location of government in which the project is located. So another document, the Act 3D1 Work Plan for the, for approval of state tax capture of the property tax component is approved by the Brownfield Authority and Michigan Strategic Fund in this case. The Brownfield Authority has already approved the Brownfield Plan and the Manistee Township Board has concurred with the Brownfield Plan to date. So there is a requirement for notices of this public hearing and two taxing jurisdictions sent 10 days prior to the public hearing. That was done. This is the public hearing held by the County Board of Commissioners as required by the Act in that a resolution approving the Brownfield Plan is included and you packed it for consideration today. Just a quick project overview, I think everyone is probably familiar with the former Kennedy School. It's 610 Parkdale Avenue. Included in the property, it does not include the bus garage for, for this purpose and includes the, the property that goes on to the railroad tracks from the Kennedy School as well. Its current use is none. It's a vacated elementary school. It's a little spooky inside. There's still books and a few pieces of furniture there. And unfortunately, the roof is leaking a bit. There was standing water when we inspected the site before. And there's a little bit of material, asbestos material and other issues to be addressed at the site as well. We did see some evidence of vandalism as well. The future plans, and of course, this is what really is happening, is these costs of asbestos abatement and some of the selective demolition don't really add any value to the property. These are extraordinary costs as part of this redevelopment that are the eligible activities that are proposed to be reimbursed through these future taxes to be held. The reconstructed renovates the facility using its, its basic shell for a senior assisted living facility. Estimated about between 25 and 35 units. They're still working on configurations about what that might be, but they've actually think that they're going to be up more closer to the 35 units. An estimated investment of about $2 million in between 15 and 25 jobs for the, for the facility. So the public purpose that is found for the, for the project is a reuse of a vacant building. There's increased investment and tax base on the property. There's additional employment and the potential for spinoff businesses that also occur as well. There's, we talked about eligible property. There's four ways in which property could be eligible for Brownfield incentives. It can be contaminated, lighted, functionally obsolete, or a new category is historic that was passed shortly. This property we've characterized as functionally obsolete, which means it's unable to be used to adequately perform the function for which it was intended. The school is no longer viable as an elementary school for Manistee area public schools and was closed in 2011. Offered for sale since 2012 and had no offers for use as a school. The roof is leaking, the mechanical systems are inadequate and there's lead paint and asbestos. An affidavit from a Level 3 or 4 assessor is required for functional obsolescence and that has been secured from the County Equalization Director. We talked about eligible activities. There's two types of eligible activities. One are environmental eligible activities. As part of the EPA grant, we were able to conduct a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 environmental assessment, sample soil and groundwater for the concern of an old underground storage tank that was used for fuel oil heat before it got to be natural gas. We did not find any evidence of release and therefore it's not a contaminated site. So we don't have any environmental activities included in this project. And what I call developmental activities or non-environmental activities are lead and asbestos abatement and demolition that are eligible for reimbursement. That's the limit of those costs that are eligible for reimbursement and they're based on the actual costs, not the budgeted costs. So we have now budgeted costs and these again are on the high side for conservative sake of lead and asbestos abatement. All the floor tiles actually in the building, 16,000 square feet, have asbestos mastic that attaches them, so those will need to be abated as well. Plus some other areas along the roof and in some of the window caulk as well. Selective demolition is estimating about $250,000. And so with contingencies, eligible activity about $385,000. There's an ability to capture interest on the project. We also have work plan review costs and the administrative and operating costs that Russ mentioned can come back to the Manistee County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to provide for the administration of this and other Brownfield plans. So we have a total of about $583,000. Again, these are on the high side, they're conservative estimates. The actual costs are submitted in invoice and reviewed by the Manistee County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to make sure that they're reasonable and necessary and that that's the actual obligation which needs to be repaid. There's no obligation to pay over these amounts or to pay anything other than actual costs. And in fact, there's no obligation if the project does not move forward and there's no tax revenues, there's no obligation to make any payments. The Brownfield Authority is only obligated to capture, to pay out those taxes which are captured. This shows the, the future of Kennedy School. If there is no improvement on it, obviously it's a public facility now and it does not generate any taxes. After the investment is made there, the $2 million, probably the first year is about a million dollars and then when this is fully built out, the blue identifies the cost over time to be able to repay that $585,000 of, of funding for the eligible activities. After a period of time, as well as the obligation is met, there's also an ability for the Brownfield Authority to capture taxes for a revolving fund as well. And then the balance of the taxes go to the taxing jurisdictions. So the investments that you make in the early part of the project yield those significant returns at the end of the project. And as you know, this is just 30 years, as long as that facility continues after 30 years, those taxes are continued to be generated. This just gives an idea about that return pie. The state is able to capture three mills for a state Brownfield fund, the obligations for the, for the funding as well. There are the returns of $390,000 for local jurisdictions and $754,000 for the state over this 30-year period. Manistee County represents the largest share of local taxes here in the state, represents the largest share of total taxes at 61%. So this gives a brief idea about how those costs are allocated across the board for the total capture. And then this shows the returns for the, for the project over the time, over the allocations. So just another way of looking at it, for the orange is the tax capture and investment that's being made and the returns over the 30 years are those which will accrue to the being made, and the returns over the 30 years are those which will accrue to the taxing jurisdictions. The schedule is, as we introduced the concept to the township and to the Brownfield Authority in April, the Manistee Township concurred with the Brownfield plan on May 8th, the Brownfield Authority approved the plan and the Act 301 Work Plan on May 14th, and we're here for the public hearing and Brownfield plan consideration. We do need to turn in the Act 301 Work Plan to the state. We have gotten a little bit of blowback from the state of their lack of interest in participating in the project, but we're not gonna take no for an answer, so we're gonna go back and talk to them. They yield, as you saw, great returns from this project, and it's only reasonable that they make an investment as well, so we're asking for their consideration for state tax capture approval. And that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
What type of septic system does that school have?
It's on a septic system, and I believe is proposed to be hooked up with the hopeful new sewer system that will be installed on 301.
But that's not contingent on the sewer line, is it?
No.
Any other questions?
Since there's a piece of property that's owned by the public school, and it has no taxable value now, is the base value going to be set at zero?
Yes.
So every dollar of taxes for the next 12 years will be captured by Brownfield?
Yes.
So this will mean absolutely no tax revenue from Manistee County for the next 12 years?
Correct.
Jack, I see you signed this. Did you read this? No, I spoke earlier. Okay, thank you. Is that any other public comment?
The last part, you talked about the state, can you repeat that, the last line about the state investment in this project?
Yeah, there's two components to the property tax capture, obviously local and state, the state is 61% of the property tax bill, and they, the MADC has taken this approach that they only wanna fund mixed-use projects in downtowns. Basically, this is a little bit outside of the downtown, and so it doesn't quite fit in with their hoped-for projects, but we believe that there's a pretty strong case to be made for turning a vacant building into a senior assisted living facility. The other part is, if they put that burden on the local, you know it's the government, they automatically start to get the taxes right away, and we believe that it's appropriate for them to share in the investment as well as the returns.
What happens if they don't get involved, is it gonna cost us any more money?
No, we'll have to leave it basically capped at that level.
If the state doesn't participate, then that means that it'll take longer to pay those, that money back, so the Manistee County, Manistee Township will not, I mean, it'll push that out beyond the 12 years.
Actually, what I believe, my interpretation is that we need to go back to the local units of government, because it changes the estimate on taxing jurisdictions if the state does not participate. We've said that there's a certain share that is captured, which would be 40% for those taxes. To continue to extend over that share, I think we'd have to go back to the taxing jurisdictions, go back through the process. So it's the way that I interpret it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to go back into regular session.
I'll make the motion to go back to regular session.
Okay, any more discussion on Brownfield?
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, now let's go back to Ways and Means. Page 88, and the brother that called back there said.
Okay. The committee considered approving the payment of on-usage accumulated vacation and personal hours to Captain Robert Lancaster, who was retired from the county employment as sheriff's office detective, May 30, 2014, as you find in the paper's A. Mr. Kaminski explained that if Captain Lancaster's any vacation or personal time prior to May 2014, money will be paid, will be decreased. This is the motion. Mr. Schmidt recommended approving the payment of on-usage accumulated vacation and personal hours to Captain Robert Lancaster in March, not to exceed $8,528, to be paid from the separation. And I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, now let's go back to Ways and Means. Page 88, and the brother that called back there said.
Okay. The committee considered approving the payment of on-usage accumulated vacation and personal hours to Captain Robert Lancaster, who was retired from the county employment as sheriff's office detective, May 30, 2014, as you find in the paper's A. Mr. Kaminski explained that if Captain Lancaster's any vacation or personal time prior to May 2014, money will be paid, will be decreased. This is the motion. Mr. Schmidt recommended approving the payment of on-usage accumulated vacation and personal hours to Captain Robert Lancaster in March, not to exceed $8,528, to be paid from the separation. And I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion support, any more discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
The committee considered a resolution imposing 2014 summer tax levy pursuant to Public Act 257 of 2004, and notice of certification of county allocation tax levy, which is adopted each year and affirms that the board approves the collection of taxes in July, and that would be in your appendix fee. This is the motion. Mr. Schmidt recommended adoption of a resolution imposing 2014 summer tax levy pursuant to Public Act 257 of 2004, and notice of certification of county allocated tax levy. No alternative recommendation was proposed, and I'll make that motion.
Discussion?
I think, I think I refer to Roger, he probably will be able to explain a lot better than you.
In 2004, the counties started collecting part of their summer tax in July, or tax in the summer, and before that, it was always collected in December. And so, we typically went to the allocation in October in portionment, you know, the approval of levying the tax in October, but this, you have to approve beforehand so that we can levy with the July tax bill. And this can be the 5.5 mills, because there's no county rollback to share.
This, this resolution's adopted, and I just wanted to make sure.
Any more discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Lieutenant Paul prepared before the committee a transfer of $1,600 from the Emergency Management Contingency Surplus Fund for the purpose of purchasing a new laptop computer for the Emergency Management Department, that would be an appendage C. Mr. Kaminski stayed at the current balance in the Emergency Management Contingency Fund line, number is $6,645.8. Lieutenant Paul stated the current computer is slow and was meant for the Emergency Operations Center and should be put back in EOC. Lieutenant Paul also suggested a computer might cost less than what was requested. Mr. Schmidt recommended that up to $1,600 be transferred from the Emergency Management Contingency Surplus Fund line item number 216000390.014 to the general fund to purchase a new laptop computer for the Emergency Management Department. No alternative recommendation was proposed. I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Rule call, please.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Colchak?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Just one more item, or I just want to mention, all these funds were listed on that fund balance sheet that Russ just gave us, so they'll all be reduced by that amount of money. The next act had to do with the library, and we're gonna put that off till next month, so Mark can explain a little bit more about that.
We're also gonna be asking you to schedule a study session, so the entire board can hear the proposal that's being made by the library and discuss potential findings, and there was a lot of discussion at Ways and Means, even some of the Ways and Means members had some, some concern that they weren't totally informed to make this recommendation, so there's two reasons why Mr. Bergstrom's not here to help explain and also dispel to move forward, it really needs to add full points. Hopefully, by the end of this meeting, we'll have a study session.
That ends the Ways and Means report, and I'd like to make a motion to accept the Ways and Means. Is that deserved? Motion, have a second?
I'll just second.
Any more discussion?
Based on Mr. Kaminski's, where are we going to make the selection of date for the work session?
I think I mentioned in my letter, I think.
Is that on the agenda as far as?
Yeah, it's on the agenda toward the end.
We're hoping for either the 11th or 12th. That is, those are really, it's down to the, those are the only two dates in June, June 11th or 12th, that both the architect and the consultant that's doing the financial study can make it, so I'm hoping, I don't know if you wanna go to that right now and do that, but we're hoping for sometime, one of those two days.
What day of the week? We have a, we have a 10:30 appointment, so. We'll go to the, we'll bring it up there later. We have a motion on the floor to accept the Ways and Means report, we have a second on the papers, a, opposed, and carries. Okay, 10:30, about two minutes early, but I'm commissioning an appointment of two for three-year term, no applications. We have two people that have not refiled that one. I'll be right there.
I thought I understood that we was gonna actually go to all the different townships and cities, and specifically kinda try and recruit people, if you will, at that level. They were gonna try and do that, and then ended up putting that in the paper, that they couldn't come up with anything, is that correct?
I did talk to Rob a little bit when we didn't have any applications, and Tom could probably talk to us too. We thought maybe we would send the ad to the township clerks, and they can dispose it to their boards, and I did give, that it would come from Rob, but I did give Rob all the addresses for the township clerks to kinda get it down to the local level, see if that helped. And then we'll try to advertise.
Now, Rob's gonna actually write a letter. Hopefully then, some of the township officials can recruit people in their township, you know, have some applications, and then also re, it's like we'll readvertise, because there are two specific areas that these people need to represent too, so that kinda whittles it down to, you know, who's qualified, it's not just an at-large position, there are one of them's economic and commercial interests, you want someone that's got some interest there, and then another one is school board interest, so I'm really hoping to get a school board member or someone to call up that knows.
Do you want me to send it to the local school board secretary?
That's how you give it out.
I know most of the locals also like to send it to him.
Relate losing two people that were very active in the planning commission, they both decided not to be applied for one reason or another, Mr. Pettis and Mary Becker Witt sort of, I think, set it yourself.
Is that what we wanted to do?
Do we need a motion, or are we just?
No.
Yeah, that's what we should do.
Does that sound something directly to the schools as well?
Yeah. Yes, because that directly affects.
You might wanna actually talk to Rob and work together with him, because I think he was gonna actually try to.
Right, that's, that's why I spake him the emails, and I've been to the planning commission, wanted it to come from there. I gave him the emails, and I'll talk to him about the school board issues as well. Work something out.
Any more discussion?
Then I'll readvertise.
Any more discussion? Okay, moving on, personnel. Okay, personnel committee met, May 7th, I want to condemn, three commissioners present. On one item requiring board action, Mr. Goddard received an application from an employee to purchase time for the time for credit for the nurse retirement program. We've done this in the past, when an employee purchases time, they pay for the whole, doesn't, nothing comes out of the county budget at all, the person requesting time pays for the time, the question. So in this case here, this person wants to purchase five years of service with nurse, and understanding that the employee is responsible for paying both the employee, employer portion of the expenses, that I'll make a motion that we allow this person to purchase five years. Support. Any more discussion?
I'm gonna have an hard time understanding this.
What is, is, nurse allows employees to purchase money, or purchase time, if you wanna add to your retirement. Like, when I retired with 25 years, and I had the option of buying up to five years if I wanted to, so that would've gave me three years, I mean, that's what this person's doing, is they're purchasing, they're looking into purchasing five years of retirement. So instead of 25 years, they have 35 years, they, they want a month or three years.
An example of this would be, if someone, and I don't know, I don't even know who this employee is, but I'll use myself as an example, I will turn 55, or less than two years from now, if I wanted to, and I will have 29 and a half years of, in order to maximize my retirement, I would need to get to 32 years. I would pay both the employee side, which is my requirement, and the county's side, side of it, a portion of it. And that's based on MERS, MERS gives you an actuary evaluation of what that would be. And then, and then I could retire at age 55 with 32 years of service when I've really only worked 29 and a half. And now, that's a gamble. Boy, I lived long enough to make up that difference, while all those different things have to come into play for an employee. And it's, the longer you wait, like if I tried to do it now at my age, because I'm so close, I'm, I'm higher up in age, the cost gets extremely, extremely high. If I would have said, I want to do this when I'm 20, because by 55 I'll have 29 and a half years, I would have been much better off doing that back then. So the cost would have been much worse less. So it's, it's completely up to the employee. The county allows it, MERS allows it up to five years, and we allow it up to five years. But both sides have to, have, both the employer and the employee portion have to be paid by the employee.
Is there a certain age that this employee has to be?
No, I think you can do it whenever you want. You can purchase one year, five years, and it doesn't matter what age you are, it's just a matter of how, whether you want to do it or not. It's all based on, you know, do you want to spend the money back to purchase those years?
So if you were.
Very few people do this.
If you were 50 years old, you worked for the county for 30 years and you need, you need 32 years to get the full pension, right? So you could buy two years and, and retire at 50 years old with a full pension.
No, you would, see, that example wouldn't, wouldn't work because you have to be at least 55 to retire.
That's what I just asked.
You have to be at least 55 to retire, even with those, with those, you, you can't retire at 50 or 52. In the sheriff's department, you, you used to be able to, but not.
Normandy, Normandy Allen is what it is, is if someone started here late, say they're 30, 35 years old when they started here and you're 55 now, or you're going to 55 and you wanted to retire and they wanted to add some more years to their pension program. So normally it's done that way.
You have to have at least, under our policy, you have to be 55 in 20 years and the sheriff's department, you have to be 50 with 25 years. Mr. Hilliard just gave a good example. If, if you started here late, 35 years old, at 55 years old, you're going to have only 20 years in. And if you wanted to retire at 55, you might say, well, I don't only want 20 years, I want 25 years. So I'm going to buy an extra five years, but have to pay both the employer and the employee portion. And that's where it becomes sticky because it's very expensive to do that and the employee has to have resources.
How much do you bet you'd get?
I'll bet you if I bought five years right now at my age, it would probably cost me $50,000 to, to buy both of those. At least $50,000.
It'd be way more than that.
It'd probably be more than that.
It would be way more than that. Think of how many cigarettes you could buy with that instead of the.
Yeah, it's usable that too.
Any more questions?
Well, just a minute before you, I want to think about this. Buying my retirement. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Any more discussion?
One quick question. Does this add into the unfunded MERS?
It, it should not because obviously you never quite know, but actuaries have determined that that should be the cost. And so it doesn't add to our cost based on that actuarial because the employee is paying our cost for that. Now, obviously if the stock market crashes or something like that, I suppose somewhere down the line that could, that could cost us a little bit of money, but you'll, you just never would know. I mean, I don't know how you determine that actuaries have to.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Kowchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
No other items requiring board action. We went into closed session to discuss union contract negotiations. And with that, I'll make a motion to accept the personnel report. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion.
I'll accept a motion.
Okay, a motion and second. Any more discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and carries. Okay, moving on to public safety. Public safety met May 7th, 2:30 noon, all commissioners present. No items requiring board action. Sheriff, non-action items, the sheriff was there and informed us that May 4th through the 10th was recognition week for corrections officers and that May 11th through the 17th was recognition week for police officers. With that, we, Mr. Schmidt put a letter together with me. I'd like to read it this time. Police Officers and Corrections Officers Week. Dear Sheriff Polakowski and Captain Lancaster, on behalf of Manistee County Board of Commissioners, I would like to recognize you and your staff for the service and sacrifice provided to the Manistee County citizens on a daily basis. It is with great pride that we take this time during the month of May to recognize the service of these individuals who risked their lives on a daily basis to protect and serve our county. It is important that we also pay tribute to all officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty, especially Robyn Ireland, who lost her life in February of 1994 as a result of Galvezville accident while in the line of duty. We also pay tribute to Michigan State Police Trooper Paul Butterfield, who also recently lost his life in September 2013. And they shouldn't be in jail while on the line of duty. As a tribute to these two individuals and all who have lost their lives in the line of duty, the Manistee County Board of Commissioners, observe a moment of silence in their honor at the board meeting on Tuesday, May 20th, 2014. I am requesting that you please pass along our thanks and recognition to all of the staff at the Manistee County Sheriff's Office as we celebrate and pay tribute to all police officers and corrections officers in our county and throughout the country. We truly appreciate your service. Sincerely, Kenneth Lee Chairman, Manistee County Board of Commissioners. With that, I'll make a motion to accept the public safety report.
I'll see what, if you want this lady to sign by the board.
Yes.
You want a motion or send a letter?
I'd be proud to enter that motion and thank you for that statement.
Second.
Okay, whatever. Richard motion and Allen motion.
Richard.
Any more discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and carries.
I make motion to accept the report as given.
Second. Second. Discussion? All the papers say aye. Pose, and carries. Technology report.
Okay, technology met April 24, 2014. I think we had a couple items here. The first one, the treasurer's office reporting problems with the BSNA program that they are currently using specifically with the personnel resume, reception work they're adding into the program. Once the information is entered, they try to print and the information is gone. They have contacted the company, they were told that they need to update the software on the computer. Administration, equalization, and the treasurer's offices all use this program. Mr. Palmer has agreed to pay for half of the license fee for upgrade and ask if administration and equalization will split the other half. BSNA support has said that upgrading the software should get this problem fixed. Mr. McFloman said that the upgrade can be done immediately as, as the software comes with the free trial and the software license would not have to be purchased until the end of the trial. Administration and equalization have not made the commitment yet, so have not agreed to split the cost, then the upgrade could be completed now and then the department could budget for the cost of the license in the next 2014, 2014, 15 budget. Total cost for license for the software upgrade is $613.52, which is within appendix A.
Mr. Schmidt, before you go into the motion.
Okay.
If, if, you know, I, I don't have any problem with this at all and I haven't talked to Rob here that he does either and the treasurer's. If, if this is budgeted in our budgets, if we have the money in our, in our budgets to purchase this and that's what you're requiring, there's no action required by the board. It was discussed and the budget's been approved and.
Okay.
You need to take another, I don't think you need to take other action.
Okay, we'll just use that for now. Let's, to the board.
Yeah, well, where are we at on this? So are we asking a question, are we voting or, or on? I'm curious about one thing I guess.
Tom says the money for this has already been budgeted in our budget.
Well, if we have money in our budget to purchase this, if you're requiring us to purchase this out of our budget, we have money, $153 we're talking about each. There's no action necessary for this board. It's already been approved. I mean, not this specific thing hasn't been approved, but that would be like me coming to you every time I need to buy file folders in our office. The money's been approved for us to purchase file folders in our office by budget, so I don't think this is really necessary.
Well, that's, that's, I guess that's where I was coming from. The administration and equalization departments won't be paying 52, or they're part of that percent, right? I mean, it's not a matter of will you please.
Okay, we use that for now. It's the board, it's got to be what they're going to, let's see, what was the next one we have here? Okay, let's see, next one. Mr. McCleod presented a quote from Delta Abisher Software Incorporated. This agreement for support was renewed last year, which is supposed to be a three-year renewal, but the company was sold to Dell and Dell has changed that to a one-year term. Renewing this agreement is critical to, as this is what backs up all the service and all the information. Not renewed mainly, the enrollment will be a loss and then to sign up again will be a greater cost. Discussion continued as to where to pay for the renewal. With some money still left in technology, it was decided to use what was available to pay the amount of $1,075.45. If there was not enough available, the remaining ones would come from the money set aside for the website fund, meaning this either is a higher priority than the website. We don't have, well, there's not a technology fund to say, so we have to get it out of the general fund, right, Tom?
That's correct.
We didn't know that. Tom wasn't there, so somebody.
This specific item probably wasn't budgeted, but the way the technology committee was talking, I mean, within that technology budget, we will find some funds to do that. From a couple other line items.
So I'll make, I'll make the, the polls for the resolution. Mr. Burks, I made a recommendation to renew the support with Abisher in the amount of Funds to be paid for this will come from remaining money in the, well, now it's going to be capital improvement. If the amount is larger than the balance of the dividend, then the additional money will come from the money that's allocated for the website. I guess we'll just take a bit of it. Make the motion that it comes out of capital fund.
No.
General fund, general fund. The money will come out of the general fund.
Technology, technology budget.
That's right, because the amount of $1,075.45. So actually the proposal that we got here is not right. It's all going to come out of the general fund. $1,075.45.
Yeah, the last part of that motion doesn't need to be included in the board motion. That was just because I don't think that at the time, the meeting you had.
We didn't have any.
We don't, we don't have a second, yeah, so it's not in the motion to the second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, now we have discussion.
My, my question is, we had a contract with the company and they sold to Dell and Dell doesn't honor the contracts that we had with people before?
I mean, definitely not. They only offer one-year agreement.
It's a heck of a way to run a budget. You can't, you can't.
Now, we have, we have, this is a clear item we have to act on.
Was there any other items or options discussed? Is there any other options?
Gore did seem to think so.
He did seem to think so.
No, we, we, if this is all, the only one to go, we're stuck. We have to have the agreement. If we don't do it now, it could triple. You were there, Joe, weren't you? Okay, because.
Really puts us on the spot if I understand the fact.
Yep, we are, we're back to the.
So maybe that's something that we can look forward to. I'm not real happy, just like what, what Brooke said, you know, and they're not going to honor what was given to us. Maybe we ought to look into that for future reference.
I'm thinking about the contract, it's on technology share. Look elsewhere, maybe, other options.
This is for backup of federal action. Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Schaefer?
No.
Mr. Downs?
Yes.
Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Mr. Kowchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
No other items and dead items need to be discussed. I make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Every motion or second?
Second.
Discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Pose, and carries.
Green Team.
Green Team met on Thursday, April 4th. There's no items requiring action. One discussion during the meeting dealt with Mrs. Archer's contract. If you remember, when we visited this last time, her contract was renewed with no change. She didn't ask for any initial monies as far as wage. She is asking us to review where we want to go with the recycling program in the future during our budgeting process in the lines such as do we want to increase her, her activities and her duties which would probably cause us to give her increased pay. We continue to see, on a, on a second note, we continue to see an increase in, in recycling activity throughout the county for the most part. And we continually see that we are behind in the monies that we have to pay that. Not much, I think it's about $1,300 or something like that right now. But we need to look at that also and see if we want to put more money towards that because right now we're spending more money than we allocated. The signs are in, I don't know if the maintenance folks have got it in yet.
They're not able to leave it with Sarah to determine.
Okay, so that was another item that we talked about and that pretty much is the meat of what we did on the second.
You said it's costing more than we're figuring in right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's, it's simple, it's, it's very simple to determine, you already subsidized recycling program $20,000 a year. One of the reasons for that is because you started charging $12 per year to the townships that participate and then a few years ago, a couple years ago, you went to $13. Not $13 per month, $13 per year to every township that participates. That doesn't cover the cost. Going to 14 or 15 or 16 probably would cover the cost, but there's fear or concern that townships will drop out of the program at that, if, if you vote that. So you have, that's something that the Green Team Recycling Committee has to wrestle with and this board has to wrestle with. Do you want to continue to subsidize the program? Or, you know, one of the, one of the ways that you can make the program work too is to continually recruit other townships, city of Manistee to participate because we'll have a larger group, more money. So, yeah, that's.
But there are recyclable ones that aren't participating or recy, recycling.
It's all a matter of what's cheaper for them and what's a better program. The best, the best, the way the program is set up now, the county board feels or felt that a county-wide program works better than everybody trying to do their own thing. That it's up to you in the future if you want to continue with that. It'd be very, it would be very easy to just shut the program down after this year if you, if you don't want to fund it at all or, or, or assess the townships. Or you continue on with the program, either at the current price or you raise the price or you subsidize it more. Those are going to be your choices.
We, we talked about the possibility, like Manistee Township. Manistee Township just entered into a recycling contract with their, with their waste hauler. And that waste hauler is the same waste hauler that we use for recycling. So there was, there were some questions as to why, why did you do that? Why did you undercut us when we're trying to put this program? It, it boils down to education. You can't, the city of Manistee is under contract for recycling. And we need to get to the city of Manistee prior to when they renegotiate the contract to give them the option to come into the county program, which we feel will cost them less money.
That's basically what we pay Iris Waste, the version of services to do. Their job, so Archer's job is to try to continually recruit new townships. That's, I, I have a hard time saying it's her fault because she's been, we're meeting with townships like crazy. It's, it's, it's just been tough to get townships to agree to come onto the county's program. I think that most townships that participate with us are happy with the program for the most part. Are there some issues? Maybe there are sometimes, but that's another thing Sarah does, is she pretty much monitors the program. So we pay her $22,000 or $23,000 a year. Subsidized portion of the, of the recycling fund is basically to pay for her contract. I would tell you that we could eliminate her or her company and you would probably come pretty close to breaking even, but I would also tell you that I think the program would fall apart very quickly if you did.
How many, how many townships have joined on since we hired you? How many, how many townships have joined on since we hired her?
Well, she started the program, so there's like-
Another lady started.
No, she didn't, she, we hired her after.
Oh, that's right. I think we've gotten, we, we, we may have not gotten any, but I can tell you-
I think it was one extra.
Maybe one.
A-actually, we, we just had the strategic plan here, and we talked about what, who all did their homework, and then the, and then the whole process in the strategic plan got changed to another direction. Uh, this is, the strategic plan was an ideal place to talk about recycling. And I had a format, format laid out that we would look at what direction do we actually want to go at. So, I think that's something that we can still talk at in a strategic plan. But, but recycling, it's important, talking about Governor Snyder, gonna initiate just one, one million dollars, most of it will be for education, but Michigan lacks. I mean, we're, we're way down on the totem pole for states that recycle. And, uh, it, it's important, and we need to advocate it, and we need to educate people. And, uh, looking forward to getting on the front side of contracts, like with the city, which Sarah and I are working on, and we've already approached. And so, we're, we're going to be on the forefront of contracts, so we can share costs, if you will, so everyone understands what they're getting, and, uh, and whether it be a township, that's where we, if, if we decide recycling is important, as a group-
Are you guys actually talking to-
That's where we can, pardon?
Are you guys actually talking to the recyclers themselves, other than the townships? Sounds like the recyclers are on your hand, they're that, or-
That's right, but, but that's where the county commissioners come into play. If we dictate, or if we say, we think county recycling is important, we should be able to go to our townships, or villages, or cities that we represent, and at least get on board with, uh, comparing apples to apples. I mean, twenty-four hour service, uh, and while you can only pick it up on, or you can only dump it here on Thursdays. I mean, we need to understand, we need to understand how much administration that these different townships are putting in, so you can actually identify the costs.
Well, I got, I got four townships in my district, and two are with the county plan and two are with not. Uh, the two that are with not the county plan, we had the waste, or the recycler, actually in a contract with them individually. And at this point, they are cheaper than the county.
They've heard about that, right? I, I've heard about that.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if we went with the recycler himself, and started talking to him to try and get us together, maybe we'd-
We do have a recycler.
If they're cheaper.
Right.
But I, I, I think we need to be on the forefront of, how, how come they're cheaper? I, what kind of education do they have? What, what kind of, uh, service do they have? In other words, you might be comparing apples to oranges instead of apples to apples.
And what I see, you're supposed to choose this.
Well, I, I think it's, I thought it was important at, at the county level, that was, that was my, uh, my part in that, uh, in the, in the strategic part of it. But, uh, I think it's important that we actually get together and you can say, county recycling is important, and then allow the program that we have to actually compare to what programs other townships are serving there, on the forefront of the contract. As in, I understand, right in the middle of a contract, that no one's going to talk and no one's going to deviate from what they have. And if we can get ahead of them, and at, at the county level, if, if we can say, we support county recycling, I think it's going to be important.
I think it's up to the Green Team and Sarah, they're due, first of all, the township and the recycler to come over to the planning of the all things doing.
That's exactly what it is. That's what we have, that's what we're doing.
Until that's accomplished, then not really-
It is a problem, it is a problem. Problem is, is recruiting other. You have a choice, and, and you'll discuss this at budget time, you have, you have a choice. You're either going to drop the program and let this company go out, or in Allied Waste go out and, and contract with other townships individually, which a lot of them do right now, continue with the program with the current number of townships, and subsidize it, or, um, I lost my train of thought, but, or just, uh, or add, or try, and continue to try to recruit other townships. Um, if you have the, the contractor that you're contracting with, in the county recycling program, going to individual townships right now, and saying, I can do it cheaper than when I'm doing it for the county, I have a question, how can that be?
That's what I'm getting at.
How can that be?
That's what I'm getting at. Somehow, you have to get on board with the contractor and say, hey, how come the-
He's already, he's already heard that. That's not to say that we're not, we're trying to tell them not to give the townships a better deal, but if you're under contract with the county, you're in the county program. So-
Well, who is that?
That's Area Thirty-One, which I would try to-
Well, yeah, they came right in here, didn't they, and, and-
You signed a contract, three-year agreement with them. They have two more years, they're only one more.
It's, it's diff, it's diff, it's difficult to, to get asked. As an example, uh, my largest township, Barm, their residents pay fifty dollars a year for, for a transfer station, which includes recycling. Now, what we would have to do is convince Barm that we would take the recycling portion of it, and charge them the-
Twelve dollars?
Twelve dollars per household out of that fifty-three. And then, that would be a better deal for them. That's what we have to convince them, it's an education process. And you're not going to be able to even start the education process until you get ahead of the, the contracts which you already have, and do the education prior to them writing the contracts.
The other portion of Iris Waste Diversion, Sarah Archer's contract is to, is to continually push education of recycling. Some people just don't even know how to recycle, they don't know, they're multiple styrofoam and everything. So, that's what the signs are for, that's what, she's, she's at the OTA meeting, she's, she's out and about, out and about in the county, um, trying to educate the public and work with the public and work with the townships. That has been an uphill battle.
I, I'm not afraid as county commissioner to ask the county to either decide we do or don't want to endorse if you are county recycling, but we need the other commissioners also within their jurisdictions to help us get in, get into all the book.
Well, I think, I think what the program may have won, I think commissioners have negotiated, it's just a matter of getting information out there and the knowledge out there, as to hopefully others, um, too.
Tom, would you send me the numbers for the knowledge of the current recycling that you do before, so to see what it's costing us and so on? Because I got one county that's going to ask a lot of numbers, especially when it's the newspaper.
Well, it's all part of this report. It's all attached.
Yeah, you know, Public Act Sixty-Nine, we charge thirteen dollars, I want to see the appropriations on our budget, because I know when I first got here, we didn't give it, the county gave no money for recycling.
No, you all agreed, you had long conversations with this.
Yeah, we, we did after my, after the second year they gave-
We supplemented thirteen dollars per household to the townships that participate, they're not covering the program. You're supplementing it at about twenty thousand dollars per year. That's exactly what you're supplementing it at, that's the budget.
What, what's the difference between that and thirty-one? And there is thirty-one and recycling?
But what, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, they're, they're the two, they're the two, aren't they, that are-
Area Thirty-One is the contractor that picks up recycling. We used to have Allied Waste, we put it off the bids, after the third year, Area Thirty-One came in, cheapened. So, they are under contract right now.
With?
With the county. Two more years, at least one, maybe two. But if you decide to drop the program, I believe there's a termination clause in the contract, so if you decide to do that, you will.
But slash, the problem of that is, the townships aren't part of our PA Sixty-Nine program, if I understand right, they're contracting with them townships that aren't part of the program. So, it's, uh-
I don't think we're going to solve it here today.
This is an action, I mean, it's-
Move on, Mr. Schaefer? Uh, I'd like to prove our point. And are there any kind of motion to-
I make the motion to accept the recycling report.
Okay, motion for it, and my discussion, all papers aye? Close. Motion carries.
Say it's eleven o'clock, actually eleven oh five.
All right. Uh, I'm Lucy Jeffield, I'm an Aquatic Invasive Species and Water Plant Coordinator. I was hired back in end of July, beginning of August, um, to raise awareness about aquatic invasive species and, um, tell people how to, they can prevent the spread of them. So, initially when I got hired, I did a lot of personal research, as I'm continuing to do that, so I can adequately educate the public. So, I've been looking at what other states are using, um, for stewardship, community involvement, monitoring and prevention programs. I've also attended a freshwater summit which addressed issues in the Great Lakes area, and I was able to make further contacts with, um, people around the state with positions similar to mine. I went around to all the boat launches in the county to survey whether it would be adequate, an adequate location to use the power washer, enough room, and, um, whether it was paved or, and all that, so I can put the mat down and not have it get damaged. Um, so, the power washer is a big part of my job, and so during the spring, summer, fall season, I will be going out probably one to two times per week and holding an event. That is, if I can get the volunteer base to help with that, I'm reaching out to local watersheds, um, and fishing groups, associations, and, uh, boy scouts, girl scouts, um, a seed to seeds program, um, any local students or anyone in the community that's interested in helping with that. Uh, with the power washer, we brought it through the Onecumadees Parade, and we were able to hand out two hundred flyers, um, explaining some common aquatic invasive species in the area, and about our power washing program. So, with the power washer, we have held a couple events at the end of last year, and then a couple this spring already. Um, we have a very positive feedback from that, from boaters. They are more than willing to let us wash their boats, and I have a short survey that I ask them questions, and, um, we haven't really ha, found, um, aquatic invasive species, which is good sign. I know they are in our waters though, um, so that is still an issue we want to address and have boaters, um, intern on, like, volunteer, I'm sorry. Um, we want them to take that upon themselves to wash their boats and take actions to prevent the spread of invasive species. For our volunteers, I have designed a T-shirt. Um, I am in the process of getting those ordered, um, so all our volunteers will have the same outfit on, so they will be easily recognized at the boat launches. And later this year, uh, June sixth and seventh, we'll be having an AIS landing blitz. Um, this is, state partners in the DEQ are going to be, um, partnering with local groups, um, around the state, there's I think eight different locations, and there's going, we're going to be distributing the same message and hand out materials, um, on those days at the same time. Um, this has been, this is the first time happening in Michigan. It's been going on in Wisconsin for probably about five to seven years, um, and they've found great success with that, so we're going to see how it goes here in Michigan. Um, and because we are in access to, like, Michigan here, we're going to hold it at, um, First Street Beach, and, um, most of the other ones have been held at inland lakes. I also, um, had a display at the county fair, um, just with some brief info, I had brochures and some, um, guide booklets that people were able to take. I wasn't there the whole time, but the booklets I had out were all taken, so it's a good sign. Um, and, um, all the talk, people I've talked with, um, were very positive and encouraging of the position that I'm doing, and, um, so I've also been doing presentations at the local schools. So, I've spent a lot of time researching different activities that are age-appropriate for the various groups. I've looked at the science standards, um, to try and tie my presentation into what their learning at the time. Uh, I've been to three of the different local schools, um, Manistee High School, and, um, Brother, and I took both their classes, I did an in-class presentation, and I also took them out to a local lake to do some hands-on, um, identification of native and non-native invasive plants that we have in our lakes. And along with that, I had an identification, um, activity. I had, like, ten different vials, and they had different species, whether native or non-native invasive, and so they identified that from different guidebooks that I had available for them. Uh, and then, the third school was Bear Lake, um, I went through and did a presentation geared towards, um, middle school, high school, so that was seventh through twelfth grade, and then, also did one elementary presentation there, um, and the kids at all the schools have really enjoyed it, and, you know, invited, they're like, oh, I hope you come back, and, you know, they've really learned a lot, and they've asked questions, so they're really engaged in it, so that's really encouraging. Um, and I've also coordinated, um, the author of Super Hooper, it's a children's book addressing Great Lakes issues and invasive species. Um, he came to two of our local schools, he went to Jefferson, did presentations for first, second, and third grade, and he also went to Kennedy, and presented to all the sixth grade classes there. And then, so that's my work with the schools, and I continue, I'm going to continue working in schools, and trying to get into all of the local schools, um, doing presentations on aquatic invasive species and eventually watersheds. And speaking of watersheds, I am involved with the watersheds, um, trying to, you know, familiar, familiarize myself with, um, each individual group and the activities and projects that they are going to be doing, um, in the future and that they're doing currently. I am actually the Greater Bear Secretary, so I go attend all the meetings and take minutes and all that good stuff. So, my future plans for this position are, um, as you know, this is a big fishing town, so, um, they have a lot of fishing tournaments. So, in their registration packets, I would like to inclu, include a handout and provide an optional power wash the night previous to the tournament and, as well as after the tournament. Um, and this past weekend at Titan for Troops, I provided handouts to put in all the registration packets, so that was three hundred plus flyers that we had distributed, um, with information about aquatic invasive species and, um, the clean drain dry message to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive species. So, also, in my future plans, is to look for further grant funding to support projects such as rain gardens, um, surveying of lakes for aquatic invasive species, so it can be mapped out, um, a possible permanent boat washing station, a high-traffic boat launch, and also roads from crossing improvements. Along with that, I would like to, um, distribute info to the charter fishermen, the various bait shops we have, and the canoe kayak rentals. And in progress right now, I am, um, creating a Facebook page. It will have info, like, probably like an aquatic invasive species of the week, um, event updates, so people can know when I have power washing events, and I'll put watershed information on there as well, and probably, um, like a Q and A section, if anyone has any questions, they can just post it on there, and I'll do my best to answer them. Um, and then, like, what's in the news, so any news articles that I find that are recent, and, um, I find that they're very interesting, I can share with, that face- and I find that they're very interesting, I can share with that Facebook group. Also, a kids' day at the library during the summer. I hope to have some kind of learning activity to involve the kids, whether it's an art project, a game of bingo, or, you know, some kind of activity like that. And that is what my future plan is, and I've kind of gone through what I've done as far as my research, power washing, presentations in schools and work with the watersheds. Overall, I, if I've done my estimates correctly, I've contacted approximately nine hundred and forty people since my hire, so, and number will only go up. So that's about all I've done, so.
Any questions? Number one, are you going to all the watersheds?
Um, yes.
Because Arcadia's got one now.
Yep, I... Yep, I've been trying to attend all the meetings. Greater Bear is Bear Creek and Bear Lake combined, so I've been going to that. Obviously, I'm the secretary, so I need to be there, but, um, and Bear Lake, and Arcadia's starting up, they're making their watershed plan, and Oneecumadee, I've been involved with that as well.
And when you say invasive species, are you talking animals and plants or just animals?
Both. Yep, but aquatic, so.
Do you all know how the, do y'all recall how this is funded?
It's true. Some type of grant. We recite, that's a statewide grant.
We received a federal grant that, I think, basically through the United States Forest Service, last year, they included the purchase of about a twenty-five thousand dollar power washer, which is, goes to the various boat launches, Kirsten's been doing that. And it, it helps, you know, I mean, we offered a plenty of people votes and stuff, and some people say, "Well, how does that really help?" Well, it's more of an education thing, as you can see from Kirsten's presentation. That's really what this program is all about, is educating kids, educating the public, so that when we're dealing with mill foil in some of these lakes, that eventually there won't be that problem because people will be taking their boat from one lake to the next. So it's, uh, getting the watersheds involved, that, it's my understanding from talking to Rob and Kirsten, that they're thrilled with, with this program, and hopefully we can get volunteers. A lot of other areas, watersheds, watershed groups assist with that power washing, assist with these programs, and so it's kind of a...
That was one question I was gonna ask, is, uh... How much action, interactions going on around the state? Do you have any idea?
Um, I know in the state of Michigan, I don't know about other areas, but it's a very new concept, like, using the power washer. The DEQ just purchased one or two power washers, so they'll be going around the state this summer. They'll have two interns that are gonna be operating that. I know up at Horton Higgins Lake, they had a power washing machine there. There's, there's not many that I know of, so it's a very, it is a very new concept, as I said. There are some permanent boat washing stations, I know at Crystal Lake and Bun Lake, haven't been up there to see them, but they have someone operating that for a certain time of the year, certain times, so.
If I might just add that to answer your question, there's a lot of activity as it relates to watersheds that connect each other to go to the Great Lakes. For example, Greater Bear's Bear Lake, which is kind of the tip of going into Bear, uh, Blue Bear Creek, which is a big bear creek, which goes to the Manasty, which goes to Manasty Lake, which goes on out to Lake Michigan. So it's that whole connectivity where we're working on trying to get all the watersheds in that connectivity, working together, getting grants to do the things we need to do. There's a Northern Michigan Aquatic Invasive Species Group, got hundreds of people involved in that, all the watersheds in the area involved in that, Michigan Lakes and Streams does an awful lot with that, the entire state. And so there, there is far greater recognition than we started the Lake Improvement Board back in two thousand and eight to start doing some of these things, and that's just a small portion of it. Kirsten has been extremely helpful to me personally, as we put our website together for the Greater Bear Water. We've got about nine hundred and eighty visitors, just in the two and a half months we've had it up. So there's, the education is going to, you know, hopefully it spreads geometrically, but we really appreciate the help that all of you have done to get us there. And what's, what's been extremely helpful to me is, I see them doing things that we didn't even think we had the chance to get done. They just do it, and Rob and Kirsten have both been doing that, and it's so nice to see that happening. It's not like our little group saying, "Gee, we have to make this done", now we've got people who are thinking ahead of us and getting things accomplished for us, and it's been a real, real treat.
So, and that was kind of what I meant from that question, this being spread all throughout the state of Michigan.
Yes.
This education.
Yes, absolutely. Big job.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. Neil, regional summit report.
Mr. Wickers, your vote. I'll go up on... We, um, we really are getting pretty much to the end of this thing as far as what we're doing, and I think all of you have that, if, um... Anybody have any questions? Have you all got it in front of you, if you need any questions? Answered? We're gonna be, you know, you know, you know how we're doing this, I would guess. Right, or not?
Looks like, yeah, you have the agenda here, it looks like.
Is there a catch bar?
Any questions for Mr. Protek on the progress of the regional summit?
Or do you have anything where you don't want to do that and you want to do something else? We did, I think everyone is gonna go along with that.
Time's running a little short to start changing things now, so.
I've been asking my speaker if he was cooperating with that.
Hopefully he'll have something to report. Hopefully by that time we'll have something to report. And...
What do we need?
Okay, well, I'll hear you, I'll listen to your stuff, the regional summit report. I'll make the motion. How's that gonna? Okay. All the favors say aye. Close, motion carries. How many control administration administrators report?
I only have two items, both of them are on your agenda. First is, I have all the budgets, hopefully in my office, I have not done any budget work yet, but at this meeting, I have to get going on that and try to have something to you by about the second week of June, so that you can start scheduling, you can start meeting and discussing, some of which you discussed this morning, recycling, budget, other things that we'll try to put together. You decided not to do this with Ways and Means Committee, so the first meeting will probably be kind of, Russ and I give you an overview of my recommendations and his recommendations, and then, you know, start breaking down the budget and actually meeting with the department supervisors, elected officials and agencies. So I'm, I'm hoping that you would schedule a couple of study sessions today, for sometime after June twelfth, further after June twelfth, better for me, but I think you need to start discussing the budget, so that the goal is to adopt a tentative budget in July, which would be your third Tuesday in July, and a final budget in August, so it's time to, sometime in mid-June, it'll be time to start meeting, so.
Want to throw some dates out somewhere? What about the sixteenth of June, for Monday?
It's the day before your board meeting, so. And you won't be taking any action at that board meeting, it's just you getting started with the process, so really any dates were, uh... June sixteenth is a...
That way, you busy on the sixteenth, Peter, any for you?
No, I'm done with it by now. That actually is a good date for me, if it was the week before, that's usually where...
And everybody should have their package by the thirteenth.
Yeah, Friday, so if they, if they diligence over the weekend, the sixteenth is a good one. Now, I will tell you that I'm going to be asking you in a few minutes to schedule June twelfth as your, as a study session to discuss to go to the library, so you will have, you would have study sessions on the twelfth and the sixteenth, and then you would have, uh... So your board meeting on the seventeenth, so you're gonna be busy.
The twelfth is not good for Richard, Mike, you have Central Water.
There's also an AES study session on the tenth.
And an AES study session on the tenth, so you're, you're right, I forgot about that.
I thought somebody was talking about Wednesday, the eleventh.
I don't want the library. The eleventh is a, is, yeah, that could, that could be a two.
Let's, let's, let's take care of one at a time first, and then we'll move to the other.
You know, I was, I was hoping that you'd schedule maybe one, two study sessions, but maybe the best thing is to schedule one, and then add your study session, your budget study session, you can schedule.
How long do you need for a study session?
You're gonna need a couple hours at least.
Okay, well, you can study one, or schedule one in the morning and one in the afternoon in the same day. There are two different, there are two different things, one's budget and one's library.
Oh, that, yes, good, yes. But the sixteenth, the sixteenth is, you can schedule, uh... On the day you did, yeah, you could, you could do that. If you, if you wanted to meet on the twelfth or the thirteenth or the eleventh, you could have a budget study session with the library in either the morning or the afternoon, and then your budget study session in either the morning or the afternoon. That would make for a very, very long day for you, I, I wouldn't suggest that, but.
We should do it the afternoon or the twelfth.
In the afternoon or the sixteenth. We're running out of options, so.
After the twelfth, you're gonna be busy.
Wednesday, the eleventh.
So twelve, twelfth is not good, Mr. Protek's got a road commission meeting in the afternoon, and we got Central Water meeting in the morning. Twelfth is just not good at all.
Right, so the twelfth, of course, the twelfth, so. The eleventh is, look, I don't have any concern with dates except for the library meeting. Neither has to be the eleventh or the twelfth, or it isn't really a...
But then let's put the library on the eleventh, and... Everybody else get it on the eleventh?
Eleventh's for the library.
At nine AM?
What date is that? I mean, what day the date is?
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday?
What time do you want? I think they're available anytime during the day, so.
You know, that, that one o'clock tonight, though, with the road commissions now, you're good.
About Sunday. This would be at the library that year.
What time?
Alan says something about nine o'clock, I'm good at that, and listen, I'll show you.
Does that sound good to you, Jim? You know it is mine.
I'm sure nine o'clock will be fine for those, you know, you do have architects that's coming from out of town, but I'm sure nine o'clock is still fine. I don't know, can't really be better, but if you want to make it tight, that's fine.
So that'd be like ten to probably twelve.
So you're going, you're going ten.
Doesn't matter, you don't need it.
Nine o'clock, that's for, very enough, just leave it at six.
Like, the night eleven is fine.
Nine eleven is six o'clock.
Yeah.
It's hard for nine, but it's okay.
When it is.
Okay, the library meeting is on Wednesday, the eleventh, at nine AM. Okay, how many more study sessions for the budget?
What did ten AM come from? There is no time. Well, I got to spare a little bit. On the left, what day is that?
June eleventh at the library at nine AM. It's gonna be a study session regarding the library, the renovation project, you will receive a tour of the library, and a presentation by the architect, feasibility study representative, and then you'll also have a discussion. You won't be able to take action, but you could take action then at your, meeting at the seventeenth.
Great. Large budget study session.
Somebody mentioned the sixteen.
Sixteenth or the thirteenth is good for me.
Sixteenth works good for me. Sixteenth works good? Sixteenth works good for you?
If I don't go to Mac, I could make it.
Do you want to go to Mac?
I haven't missed a meeting there yet. Yeah, I could take it.
What about the thirteenth, this is a Friday.
Thirteenth, if we do it in the morning. Because that, that could be, is that the joint court date?
Is that a joint court?
Yeah, it might be the joint. That'd be afternoon, though.
That would be the second, yeah, that'd be the second Friday, so that would be, but that's not the case, so that's not, I mean, I'm...
That's true. Yeah, but we don't want to get the judgment, that's, you guys don't say that, eh?
Okay, so. I would, I would prefer the sixteenth, it gives me a little extra time, but it's up to you. But, or, or it could be, you know, if you want to spread this out, you're gonna be meeting in special study sessions about three or four times in a week. If you want to make it more after the board meeting, like the seventeenth, eighteenth, the seventeenth is your board meeting, the eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth is a Friday, if you want to extend it out a little bit, it's up to you.
Eighteenth's good for me. Nineteenth's good for me.
That's a day after your board meeting.
Nineteenth's not good for me, or, plus it's in the...
You're, you're tired, that's why.
I'm open.
What about, my eighteen?
Eighteenth, I'll, yeah, I'll pay Gabriel, how many that one that you would do?
When I'm looking at the sixteenth, is that still on? I mean, is that possible? We're not looking like the sixteenth. We knocked it off.
I can the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, what time?
That's Russ. Nineteenth and the twentieth don't work for me.
Okay.
So the sixteenth. Let's do the sixteenth.
I do know that Mike Burge stated to me that he was available on the, uh...
Sixteenth.
Thirteenth, so if you wanted, I don't know if Mike's good.
I think he's booked for the sixteenth of this noon. Dude didn't born on the thirteenth.
What, uh, what day do you, what?
Sixteenth.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Uh, sixteenth at noon.
I'll, I'll skip right.
I'm at sixteenth either in the morning with coffee and donuts, or noon with lunch.
Donuts? Me neither.
Only if you buy it, Alan. I got it, guys.
That, that may be here. So budget work scheduled? That'll be a budget work session, yes.
Anything else, Tom?
That sets me a, that sets me a deadline for the budget.
Okay. So who, who is the sixteenth?
The sixteenth is a night, it's the Monday.
Okay, individual, uh, individual admission.
No, I really don't.
Burge?
No, nothing that you're not gonna find out about if you go to Mac.
No, nothing special.
Alan?
The only thing I, I was gonna mention to that guy who talked about the dairy program, it, it might be good if we could ask our sheriff to give him a call and explain our...
I think they were already talking about it.
Well, well, I kind of know what they left together, but, but sure enough, if he could explain our scent program, where I think some education was involved in that. I'm not saying we don't do anything, but I'm saying maybe give him a little bit better feeling of understanding why our rate is down, which he did, he's quick to.
Tom, can you put that on the public safety agenda, and we'll discuss it with the sheriff and the public?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else, Alan?
No.
I have nothing?
No, you know, I just wanted to mention that, you know, Kirsten, she was doing all that education in schools and the recycling, maybe that's where it needs to start, in the schools, maybe we could suggest to Mary that she go to the schools, because, you know, kids try to recycle, bringing it home to mom and dad. You know, she's doing a lot in the schools with younger kids.
That is part of the program.
And I'm thinking, you know, maybe Mary could recommend to her to do that, maybe that would...
Who's Mary?
Sarah.
Oh, Sarah.
That she could, you know, start at that look, at that young level and...